You can stand down.
Okay. I call to order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission for Monday, October 9th, 2023, and we'll start our meeting this evening with roll call.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Van Hoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hunchins is absent. Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Thank you. Also introductions, our county commissioner, Tom Wolfe, is in the audience there. Also at the end of the podium here, Brad Davis, our planning manager, is here, as well as Rachel Nosbush, deputy clerk to the board, who's next to him. In the audience, I also see Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, and Nathan Hall, our associate planner, here this evening. Our next item is the approval of the September 11th, 2023 Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. All the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September... I have a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Okay, I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pika?
Pika.
Who? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Repose?
Mr. Chair, I abstain.
We have one abstention. The minutes are approved. Our next item is our consent agenda. I will open a public hearing to consider the consent agenda. This evening, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or a public member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. This evening, our item is number 2023. It's only one item on the consent agenda. It's request to rezone 2.86 acres from I-1 Rural Industrial to C-1 General Commercial at Camping World Holdings as the applicant and property owner in Section 4 Sand Creek Township. Would anyone like to have that item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing that no one would like to have that moved, I will entertain a motion to close the consent agenda. So move. I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will now entertain a motion to approve the item on the consent agenda.
I want we approve the item on the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I abstain.
We have five ayes with one abstention. The motion carries. Our next item is a public hearing. It's request number 2023 DS084, request for conditional use permit to operate a contractor yard, including office shop maintenance facility and outside storage, and preliminary and final plat of Highway 169 Industrial Park Third Edition, Greystone Construction Company applicant and JL Place Land Holdings LLC property owner in Section 4 of Sand Creek Township. And I see Marty Schmitz will be making our staff report. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. So on the screen is a site location map for the two properties proposed for plating and a conditional use permit. Both these lots are part of the 169 Industrial Park. This is an industrial area of Sand Creek Township. We're in Section 4 of Sand Creek Township. The parcels are located a few hundred feet west of Highway 169, which is here, and just to the east of Jordan Avenue, which is located here. The properties are boarded by Greystone Lane on the north, east, and south sides, which is fairly significant because they have a lot of frontage on the publicly maintained rolls. Also on the south side, on the west end, the properties about Jordan Avenue here. I'm going to jump now to an aerial photo. Here you can see the two pieces again, proposed for plating and conditional use permit outlined in red. The northern parcel includes an industrial building. The building's about 90 by 255. It includes offices, warehouse area, and kind of a maintenance area within that building. Access to the site is off of Greystone Lane here on the north, and there's another access here to the east. You can see from the aerial photo that this is an industrial area, as I said before. The property just to the west is owned by Greystone Construction. This is a contractor yard, similar to what the applicant is proposing here. To the north, you see another contractor yard in this location here. This is a vacant industrial property that's owned by Camping World. Here to the east, between 169 and Greystone Lane, you have the three commercial lots that are owned by Camping World. To the south, this is the original building that by the yard operated from. Currently, there's some light manufacturing and warehousing uses within that building. And then to the west, this agricultural property is part of the WebPallet property, or WebPallet facility, which you can see here to the north, is also a pretty heavy industrial use. Here is a preliminary plat drawing for the site. Again, the building here on the north end. One of the reasons are probably, some of the reasons that the applicant is choosing to replat this property, two lots into one, is number one, to get rid of that common property boundary where you have building setbacks, outside storage step back requirements there, and also remove some of the drainage utilities and its associated with that common property line. Third reason would be to remove some of the septic sites that are required here. If there's two lots, there has to be two primaries, two alternates. In this case, he has just the one primary and one alternate site that he needs to maintain. So those are primarily the reasons. He has outside storage as a premium that he's looking for, so combining the lots was important to him. Jumping out to the final plat drawing, on the final plat drawing here again, you'll see, this is the building that has a lot on it. There is a gas line easement that goes through the site, right through this area here. So that's accounted for with either plat. One thing that you'll notice on the plat is the name change. Originally, the name was proposed as Highway 169 Industrial Park Third Edition. That name was actually taken by Camping World, so they renamed the plat to JL Place Edition. Otherwise, no changes there. Going now to the site plan. Here's the site plan for the proposed operations. Again, the building here on the north, this darker shaded area coming out the north axis, it will all be asphalt paving. This is where the, will be more vehicle traffic taking place. This is where their loading dock doors are, and this is where they'll be installing some overhead doors into the building where they can get equipment and then out for maintenance. The lighter shaded areas are asphalt millings. This is the area that'll primarily be used for outside storage. The applicant's business is a general contracting business. He builds roads, installs utilities, trails, that sort of thing. So you'll see trucks, trailers, hotbeds, front end loaders, bulldozers, that sort of thing. He'll also have materials out here, sand, gravel, mulch, hydro mulch, pavers, those sorts of things. And there'll be a fueling area within the yard here. Again, like I said earlier, primary and alternate drain field. Primary site is located to the west of the building, between the building and the property line. Alternate site is located here, over along Jordan Avenue. Scott County Environmental Health has looked at both the primary and alternate site and is recommending approval of this use with those facilities. To the south of the alternate site, you'll see the stormwater management pond and infiltration area. Scott County Environmental, our natural resources, has reviewed the resource management and stormwater facilities for this site. You will notice in your folder tonight, there's an updated memo from Megan Taskar, natural resources engineer, recommending approval of the stormwater facilities as designed for the property. On the south side of the site, you're going to see another access to Greystone Lane. The applicant felt this is necessary to get larger loads in and out of his yard with minimal disturbance, so he's proposing that entrance as well. Probably the most significant item here from a planning standpoint is the outside storage. This is a significant amount of outside storage. As I said, the types of outside storage are primarily going to be equipment and materials used in his business. He is going to have a chain link fence six foot tall around the entire perimeter of the site. That fence will have vinyl slots inserted into it to assist in screening some of this outside storage. In the original submittal, he submitted a landscape plan. Staff asked him to increase the amount of plantings along the outside storage, along Greystone Lane as part of our approval. He did do that, and let me jump to the landscape plan here. So he pretty much did, just as staff asked, he increased the number of pine trees and spruce trees along that fencing to help break up that outside storage view from 169, which is, like I said, a few hundred feet here, the other side of Camping World's property, and also from Greystone Lane. So staff is comfortable with the landscaping as proposed, with the updates that they have done. I'm going to jump, go back now. Here are the building elevations. The building is, for the most part, a metal building. It does have a stone wainscot along the bottom few feet of that building, three, four feet. The applicant will be maintaining that building in its existing condition. They will be installing some overhead garage doors to get access to that southern portion of the building with equipment. Otherwise, the building won't have any changes to it. Here's the floor plan showing offices here, warehouse area, and then this more southern portion of the building is the area that'd be accessible by equipment. Landscape plan. Here's the lighting plan. Lighting plan shows the applicant in meeting our lighting intensity requirements, both at the road and property lines. Staff will need to review those lighting fixtures when they're proposed for height and make sure that they're downward facing 90-degree cutoff angle that our ordinance requires. But what they're showing is meeting our requirements there. The applicant did go to the township meeting last Thursday night. The town board did recommend approval of the request. They are requiring a three-way developers agreement for the installation of the stormwater facilities here. The township engineer will review those as they're being installed, make sure they're being installed according to plan. Also, as part of that agreement, there'll be a maintenance part to that, that ensures that the property owner will pay for the maintenance of those stormwater features. With that, I'll stand for any questions. The applicant is present along with the town board, if you have any questions.
Right. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins? I've just got two. So I'm assuming, Marty, that the reason he's replating this is to facilitate the storage of equipment. Would I be right on that?
Yes, that would be accurate, Commissioner Robbins. He's trying to optimize the amount of area that's available for storage of equipment and outside and materials.
Right. And besides the six-foot length fence, is he anticipating or is going to have any other security on site?
I don't believe so. I see the applicant shaking his head, so probably not.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Pika?
I'm curious, how deep is that gas line? I know it's a pretty good sized one. Is there, not that it matters, but I'm just curious.
We don't have that information. I know there are some requirements for paving over the top of that gas line, and the applicant has been in contact with the gas line company as to what the requirements are for any type of concrete or asphalt paving over that gas line. And if that needs to be cut out, he's responsible to put it back in.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. It's hard to tell, but I'm sure the plantings are outside the fence, correct?
Correct. They're in between the fence and the road right of way.
Right.
So they'll be fitted in between there, yes.
Okay. That was my only question. Okay. I don't think there's any more questions. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this application, they can come right up to the podium here. You could just come up to the podium here. And there is a sign up sheet at the podium.
I'm Beverly Canon.
Okay.
I have property across the road.
Okay.
And I don't have...
If you want to speak into the microphone, so.
Okay. I'm not hearing you talk about the stormwater, how that's handled, how deep does it go, and how big is it, and how is it taken care of so it isn't full of chemicals or any of those things. I got this, and that's all I have, so.
Okay. Does she say she lives across the street? Yes, your neighbor's Beverly Can?
Canon.
Canon. And you live across the street? You have the property across the street from the property?
Well, I'm not real sure because it's down here, and it's a little bit to the south of this.
Okay. So your concern is that how's the stormwater being handled, and what does that mean when they catch it?
Because they're close to the river.
Okay, okay.
And lots of water that comes from God only knows where. It comes on my place, so it better be clean.
Okay. Well, we will respond to that. We'll have staff respond to that question for you. See if we can answer that.
Do you have anything written to show me?
Do I have anything written to show you? I have what's on the website, and we can get that to you. We can get you the stormwater plans. But let me go over the question here for the board.
Thank you.
Rather than having our conversation up here. Ms. Canig's property is located over here, off of 173rd and 169.
Okay.
The properties we're talking about are here, so they're a little bit away from Ms. Canig's. I'm going to go to the...
How far is it?
Thousand plus feet, couple thousand feet.
Pretty close.
So as part of the stormwater management, there is going to be like a concrete gutter installed here. This gutter will pick up the water from the storage area, bring it into the stormwater ponds, which essentially filter out impurities. There's also an infiltration area that controls volume. So what's happening here is rate control, volume control, and water quality improvements for the site, meeting our Chapter 6 requirements. And I don't know a ton about our Chapter 6 requirements. If Ms. Canig would like to call the office tomorrow, I could have Megan Taskar, natural resources engineer, contest Ms. Canig, and go over exactly what the stormwater facilities do for this particular site, and really all sites within the industrial and residential areas of the county.
Okay. That would be good.
Mr. Chair, Marty, the county requires all stormwater rate to be controlled to be less than what it was originally. So it's actually less water leaving the site than was probably going on right now.
Yeah, so our ordinance do require a pre-settlement runoff rate and volume, and that's the reason for the infiltration basin, to get that infiltration for, like during a heavy rain, you're probably going to have more runoff, but during a normal rain, you're going to infiltrate that first portion of the water that comes off the site. You're not even going to have it leave. It's going to go into that infiltration basin.
Thank you.
Just with a slight description, what do they do? What do they produce there?
So the applicant is a general contractor, so he's going to be storing trailers, trucks, equipment. Yes.
No production?
No, there isn't any production within the yard.
No.
He's a contractor, so he works offsite. He'll be, and they build roads, put in utilities, construct trails, that sort of thing.
Hopefully that helped to answer your questions on the stormwater and...
If it'll, I'll be in contact with them for more information.
Great.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other comments on this application? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins. Second by Commissioner Huber. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. The hearing is closed. This time, I'll entertain a motion regarding this item before us at this time.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval listed in the staff report, recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat of Highway 169 Industrial Park Third Edition. Approval of the conditional use permit for JL Place. To operate a contractor yard, knowing that his recommendation is subject to the conditions, must be satisfactory address prior to county board consideration of the project. It know the town board has recommended approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? All in favor, vote aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. Our next item before us is number 2023 DS067, request for conditional use permit to operate equipment office service contractor yard within equipment rental and outdoor storage display, mess and bring construction engineering applicant and property owner in Section 13 of New Market Township. And Mr. Wagner will be making our staff report. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners. So on the screen is the subject property outlined in red. It's Lot 2, Block 1, Fieldstone Industrial Park Second Edition. So for locational purposes, again, this is Section 13 of New Market Township. The property has frontage on Pillsbury Avenue, but gains access from Larson Lane, which is a dedicated New Market Township road, which then connects to 245th Street East, which is County Road 62. All this property is located to the east of Interstate 35, and this area is generally south of Lakeville by a couple miles. So the commission will remember this site both from a previous application and from the development. So the Fieldstone Industrial Park went through the process in 2020, 2021, created 10 industrial lots in the rural business reserve zoning district. The RBR zoning district generally allows some small industrial uses, contractor yards, things like on that nature. So this site here, when the entire property was developed, does include a stormwater pond for that, that takes stormwater from a majority of the site. So there are a couple of ponds put in this area. So there's a stormwater basin here and an infiltration basin here on the back of the property. Equipment Share is a national company that does mainly rental in service of construction equipment. So on the screen is examples of things that they would lease out to businesses. So anything from lighting to aerial lifts to, you know, heavy equipment, and then smaller things like generators. So they're proposing to utilize this site, which was previously approved by the county for a trucking operation. That trucking operation, after getting approval, had identified a new site that would better suit their needs. So Mess and Bring Construction, which is the owner, put the property back up for sale, and then Equipment Share contacted the county late this summer about locating their facility, which mainly would house 10 to 12 people, employees between office workers and service technicians, as well as a yard manager. So you can see a description of the people that would be working on the site. So essentially, what they do is they lease out equipment to construction businesses. And so development of the site would be exactly the same as the trucking company layout. So the proposed building is located here. It's a 15,000 square foot building. The office area is kind of penciled out here. That would be about 2,200 square feet. And then the building is mainly going to be used for servicing equipment. To the rear of the property would be their proposed storage yard, where their equipment would be housed externally until, you know, sales and for sales display area. In the front are parking spaces required by county ordinance for both employee and customer access. So the site is mainly one driveway access off of Larson Lane that would go both to the storage yard and to the parking area. Here's more of the site development plan. As I mentioned, the rear of the property is where the stormwater infiltration area is, stormwater pond and infiltration area is. Proposed building on the southern end of the site, and then the main primary septic site is up here, the alternate site down to the south portion of the property. This drawing represents the previously approved landscaping plan, so you can see the trucks that were proposed with the previous proposal. But we kept this in here because the applicants are updating this to reflect the new use, but it's going to be essentially the same storage area. But this is the landscape plan. So as I mentioned, the property at Butts, Pillsbury Avenue, and when the developer put in this development, they shaved down the berm along the county roadway. So they're putting in, they're putting in 30 Black Hill spruce on the south and west side of the pond, and then kind of on the northeast side of the pond here, to kind of screen the outdoor sales display area from the county road. And then the other landscaping is more decorative along the parking lot and along the entranceway. But the proposed landscaping is the same that was approved before, does exceed our rules and regulations. Scott County requires, based on the size of the building, we require 51 landscape units. This application proposes 79, so they're well exceeding what they're required to put in here. Environmental Services has approved the proposal for septic, and the stormwater management plan was previously approved with the development. And the plan that was on the screen here was also approved with the previous proposal, so they're not making any changes to what the county had approved previously. Just an example of the building. So this will be the front of the building on Larson Lane. To the back, this would be the west-facing towards Pillsbury Avenue. These will be the service doors where they can bring in equipment for maintenance. And then we have the north and south elevations. Just a floor plan, kind of reiterating what I said about the office area. So there'll be four or three offices, conference room, waiting and a customer counter area. And the applicants did attend the New Market Township meeting last Tuesday night, and the township did recommend approval with no conditions. I don't see any representation here, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff is recommending approval of the request.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. So any questions for Mr. Wagner from the commission at this point?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson.
I just want to retap on the issue associated with traffic, which was a major issue when we first put this business park together. And I see we're way below the total number of trips that are allotted for there, and I just want that to be part of the public question.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Watson, the other kind of beneficial thing with traffic and what we anticipate here, the previous user of this property was a trucking company and did not have any set hours with trucks coming in and out. This proposal is basically Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, so there's no weekend hours. So this generally would have less of an impact on adjacent landowners as far as traffic goes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Huber.
That lowering that berm along the county road, that helped a lot for sight going south, with people coming up there.
Correct. Yeah, as I think many of the commissioners know, the way Pillsbury Avenue is constructed, it is at a skew to the south.
Yeah.
So the berm obscured site vision to the south, so taking out that berm has greatly improved site distance to the south. So in exchange for that, they're putting in that solid road.
And second, the residents to the north have been pretty quiet.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, commissioners, we do, we have occasionally, from the one individual, well, it's hard to see right across here, there's a home. Just because of the ponds and everything here, we did get a couple emails, I believe, last winter. But I know the developer has been working to install some more trees along that north side, and I don't think we've received any calls or emails in probably six or eight months, so.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Commissioner Hussein.
So is there any... So is, is there any minimum height for these landscaping trees?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein. Yes, for minimums, it's for evergreens, which they're putting in, it's six feet. I know on the north side, so along, along County Road 62 or 245th, I know the developer did do some different heights. I think maybe eight or 10 feet in certain areas. But the minimum is six feet, and they are, they are meeting those, so.
Another question is, in the last building plan, you have removed that two restrooms. Why are those removed?
No, there's, there's restrooms in here. That would be right here. So there's a, there's basically a customer restroom, I think, on this side. And then this would be an employee restroom here.
In the building plan that I have.
This one, this one that's on the screen? Yep. Oh, here. That may just because this business has less employees than the previous proposal. So the, the previous proposal was a large trucking company that had probably more drivers. So this, this facility with only 10 office people, they don't, they feel they don't need as many restrooms.
They don't need any restrooms?
They are having two, yes. Right here. These are restrooms right here. But they're taking out the two in the middle, so they will have restrooms.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this application, they can come up to the podium. There is a signup sheet, and just start with your name. Not seeing anyone moving towards the podium to talk. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second. Second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye. I will entertain a motion for action on this item before us.
Mr. Chair, based on the criteria for the approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the conditional use permit for equipment share to operate an equipment office service contractor yard with equipment rental and outdoor storage and display.
And a motion, do I have a second?
One second.
Second by Commissioner Huber. Is there any discussion on the motion before us before I call for a vote? Hearing none, at this time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next item this evening is the planning manager update. And I'll go to Mr. Davis at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll update the Planning Commission on board action since our last meeting. Based on your recommendations, the board did approve on September 19th the detached accessory dwelling unit for Lattabert Shepiloff. That was in Spring Lake Township. Last week, on October 3rd, the board approved the preliminary and final plat for Camping World Holdings. And you had another item in front of you for another recommendation on that project. They also approved last week an amendment to the interuse permit and developer's agreement for Shakopee Sands mining, again, based on your recommendation. The board adopted a new ordinance and amended our parks ordinance that prohibits the use of cannabis on public property, county-owned public property. So that's similar to actions that our cities have taken on the public use of cannabis. Speaking of that topic, I shared with you an email response from a staff member in Pueblo County, Colorado. We posed six or seven questions, asking on their experience regulating cannabis retailers and grower operations. And just wanted to take a moment and see if you had any comments or reaction to some of the information that was shared with us, or any follow-up questions that you'd like me to pose as we move towards some workshops this winter on this topic.
I've already given my questions.
Yep, I saw your question, Mr. Hussein, and I'll, I'll get some answers to that. It dealt with the medical marijuana aspect of this, whether the state law has changed the regulation on the medical marijuana. So I need to look into that a little bit. And then you just wondered about how Colorado had their tier system of number of plants. And I'm not really sure how they.
That might relate to Colorado state law on that. When they have tiers like that, that was my suspicion on that. Because when I saw that, that's what I thought it might be related to. But that's a good question to find out why that is. The interesting thing I thought was that the growth started with interior building grows and then have, over the years, gone to outdoor grows because of the cost of electricity and grow plants and lights and things like that. So that was kind of an interesting.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Davis, where are we right now? We're in a, you know, if somebody said, when are we going to finally make a decision? What would you say to them with regards to the county?
In regards to an ordinance?
Yeah, ordinance and, and how, how this moves along now.
Yep. So still today, no one can begin a cannabis retailer grow operation until they get a state license. And we keep being told that that won't happen until January of 2025 or thereabouts. So we still have that time period to, to lean in on, I guess, if we did get asked today to process a permit. Between now and January 2025, it's my goal to adopt an ordinance that would regulate this new industry. And like most communities, I think we're waiting for model ordinances to come from the state of Minnesota. That was part of the legislation that they would provide local communities, the model ordinances that we could then work from and customize and localize. That hasn't happened yet. So I'll keep monitoring that. I'd say by next spring or late winter, if we still don't see those model ordinances, I think we and other communities are just going to have to start crafting our own language and getting it out for public hearings and comment and.
Where would they come from in the state, do you know? Would they come from that Office of Cannabis Management, probably?
That's my understanding, yep.
So they have to get that off the ground and running, and then develop the ordinances?
Yep.
And, Mr. Chair, we're not the only, only ones waiting for that. A lot of municipalities and state are waiting for the state to go ahead, right?
That's correct. Yep. You're absolutely correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your work on that, by the way.
Yeah, so. The goal maybe is to, once we either get into the model ordinances or start crafting our own ordinances, I'm sure we'll have a series of workshops. And it's at one of those workshops, we can invite the planner from Colorado to give us more insight.
Yeah, good.
I too, I thought that was interesting about the number of outdoor grow operations over time. And then how they've tended to cluster together. And multiple businesses would be in the same location or near each other. I didn't think that was happening, but that was interesting as well. All right, more to come on that. The other thing I wanted to hand out on the request of the city of Prior Lake, they emailed this letter to me, and they asked to distribute it to the Planning Commission. So I thought I would do that under my manager, manager's update. So this is a memo from the city of Prior Lake in support of looking at rural industrial development in Spring Lake Township. So as you know, we had a public hearing before you this spring looking at a comp plan amendment to allow some rural industrial development at the intersection of 282 and 13. And that was in the orderly annexation agreement area. As you know, that request eventually got denied at the county board. But one of the outcomes is a work group that I'm on, and representatives from the city and township are on, looking at how we can continue to work together, the city, the county, and the township, to continue talking about the OEA agreement and looking for suitable sites for rural industrial development. And so this letter from the city is supporting continuing discussions on that, supports undertaking a study to identify suitable locations in the township for rural industrial development. And one area that has been mentioned in that work group is down a little bit farther south on the intersection of Trunk Highway 13 and County Road 10. Generally, this is Lydia, the hamlet of Lydia, and the church property there, if you know that general part of the county. Some property around that intersection area has been suggested as a possible site for some rural industrial development. So I'm just sharing this letter on the request of the city of Prior Lake.
Mr. Chair, Brad? Sorry. So they will want to look outside of their orderly annexation area to look for other rural businesses, commercial businesses, correct? Is that outside of their orderly annexation area?
The city?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what this letter is saying, that if the city supports looking outside the OEA.
So they're still against letting temporary commercial inside their orderly annexation area?
That'd be correct, yep.
Mr. Chair, when you say industrial rural development, you're talking about industrial companies, but you might also be talking about development, actually, building, am I right?
Yeah, land development, plating of the lots, putting up buildings, like what we saw in a couple of agenda items here this evening.
So did this come partially out of this working group of our meeting that we had here between the township and the, you think, or was this in the works before, or?
No, it was really outcome of the meetings we had here, the county board's decision. And then there was a joint meeting between the county board, the town board, and city council. And it's that meeting that directed this work group to start working on different activities.
And do you think, you know, it's early on in the process? But just from our experience, it seemed like there's a lot going on, different expectations between the city and the township, and the county getting a little bit on the stuff. That this might be, these working groups might come out of other cities that have orderly annexation as they start to grow, as the cities grow into those townships around them, that this might become a model for that if it's successful.
Don't know. I don't know if it'll be a model or not. It's just kind of the situation we were in with this, these particular entities to try to work through. In this situation, obviously, there was an OEA that it is expired. So it's a unique situation.
Can we see this, this area that's identified? You know, it's on County Road 13 and CR 10.
Yeah. I'll be able to immediately hear, but I'll follow up with an email, and I can send you a air photo of the area.
Thank you.
That is all I have for a manager's update tonight.
Okay. Anything else for the cause before? Well, thank you very much to the staff. Great job tonight. Thank you for everyone who came to the meeting. And thank you to the commissioners. At this time, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting this evening. Motion by Commissioner Robbins, do I have a second?
A second.
Second. Commissioner Pika, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Close to a record. Close to a record. Top 10s are on long meetings.